Seeing none, except the agenda. I don't see councillor Wentzink on here yet, so I'll need to change this. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the committee of adjustment hearing agenda of Monday, November 9th, 2020. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on, ratify the minutes. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor. Wentzink not on here. Seconded by councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the committee of adjustment hearing of Monday, October 26, 2020. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Minor variances, MV012020. Public notice and application, MV082020. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Madden. It is a recommendation, the planning department, that the committee of adjustment approve minor variance application, MV082020, as submitted with the following conditions. The applicant will be required to obtain a building location certificate prior to the building permit being issued. Obtain a section 59 clearance notice from the conservation authority prior to the building permit being issued. Inspect the septic system every five years. Welcome, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will be sharing my screen. Can everyone see my screen now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. For the first application for minor variant 082020. The applicant is Tony Pichinini. The lands are located at 3465 Dalhousie Street in Glen Robertson, Ontario. The lands are designated rural district and they're zoned rural. The purpose of the application, the applicant is seeking relief from section 3.16A of the zoning bylaw to extend the reconstruction period for a single-этаж dwelling from 12 months to 24 months. And in front of you will see the subject lands in Glen Robertson on County Road 23, which is also Dalhousie Road. There are site visits, so the home burned down on August 1st, 2019. So as I mentioned, burnt down last year in August, and it was a legal non-conforming use existing for over 50 years. That burned down last year. So again, section 3.16 of the zoning bylaw permits the reconstruction of dwellings that have been damaged or destroyed within 12 months. The purpose of this amendment is to extend this period to 24 months. Reconstruction is permitted as long as the building is rebuilt within the same size and bulk and is not larger than the previous home. So in order to assure that the new dwelling will be the same size, a building location certificate will be required from the owner and applicant. And the applicant's plans are to reconstruct the dwelling in spring 2021. This is just an image for you of what it looks right now, so it burned down. The owner is working on cleaning it up and will be getting, obtaining the building location certificate shortly. Just another image, this is from the driveway as you approach the property. Okay, so it's very important to mention there are several constraints on the lands. It's right adjacent to a waste disposal zone, which is immediately to the south of the property and the former dwelling. So our zoning bylaw actually requires a setback of 500 meters from a waste disposal zone. But because this dwelling was a legal non-conforming use for over 50 years, this provision doesn't apply. There is, the lands are also located within the wellhead protection area for the Glen Robertson drinking water supply. And for this reason, the RRCA is requiring a section 59 clearance notice. This will be valid for five years and there is no cost to the applicant. And then the SCG counties provided a comment that a setback requirement, permits will be required if the single-этаж dwelling is rebuilt within 45 meters of the center line of the road, and this item will be confirmed through the building location certificate. Okay, so the four tests of the minor variants are planning accession 451. The first being, does it comply with the intent and purpose of the official plan? So then, as I mentioned, the lands are designated rural district. This designation permits a variety of uses such as farms, forests, small industries, golf courses, and clusters of residential commercial development. This intent of designation is to accommodate a variety of land uses that are appropriate for rural locations such as this one. So this minor variance does comply with the intent and purpose of the official plan. Test number two, comply with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. So our zoning bylaw, the lands are zoned rural. And this zoning does permit a single-этаж dwelling that has existed there for over 50 years. So again, as I mentioned, the purpose of this application is to extend the reconstruction period from 12 to 24 months for the former single-этаж dwelling being rebuilt. Therefore, condition two is cleared as well. Test three of the minor variants. The application is deemed suitable and desirable for the surrounding area. So the dwelling has existed for 50 years, there was no conflict, it was desirable for the surrounding area. And given that there will be several requirements such as the building location certificate, the clearance from the conservation authority, and also a condition to inspect the septic system every five years. It will ensure that it is compatible with the sensitive environmental area, which is the wellhead protection area. Thus, we can consider this application desirable for the surrounding lands composed of rural lands. And number four is the application minor in nature. So the proposed extension of the required period for a construction of the legal non-conforming use will not generate negative impacts on the surrounding lands. It will remain, the building that will be rebuilt will be the same size and bulk as the former one, so there is no negative impact expected. And as I mentioned, those requirements which are part of the resolution will assure that it is minor in nature. So therefore, it is the recommendation of the planning department that the committee of adjustment approve minor variance MV082020 were the conditions that Mr. Mayor has brought out already. Thank you.
Thank you, Kasia. Are there any questions from the members of council? Questions, deputy mayor?
Thank you, I'm just out of curiosity as much as anything. Kasia, do you know what the delay is in rebuilding on that site?
So it built down August 1st, 2019. He is planning to construct it, start building in May next year. So it's gonna be a year and a half or so.
You don't know why the delay?
Oh, why the delay? Sorry, I don't hear the why. So this land was a sales tax, tax sale, sorry. So for this reason is the delay, just because of the nature of all the constraints, so the wellhead protection area, the waste disposal zone being adjacent. Whenever there was a proponent that saw these constraints, they weren't really willing to buy these lands. And actually, the person that purchased these lands, the current owner, he wasn't aware, he didn't do due diligence. So he just purchased it without knowing that he would need this kind of approvals. That's the reason.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay. I have a motion moved by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Manley, there being no further business to discuss. The committee of adjustment hearing was adjourned at 6:10 PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We will move on to the public meeting of planning. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Madden, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the public meeting agenda of Monday, November 9th, 2020. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Are there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, ratify the minutes. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the public meeting of planning of Monday, October 26, 2020. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to zoning amendments, we have zoning amendment Z102020. And I will ask Kasia to begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sharing my screen again. Okay, so Z102020 is in front of you. Okay, so. The applicant for these lands is Nadia De Santi from WSP, and as you know, this is part of the IHA development project. The location is north of County Road 43, across from the hospital at concession lot 3, lot 2, to the east, and lot concession 3, lot 3. The lands are designated the residential district in SCG official plan, and the zoning is residential first density and residential fourth density. The purpose of the zoning bylaw amendments to rezone the subject lands from R1 and R4 to mixed residential use, RMU zone and a residential mixed-use holding zone. So these zones actually don't exist in our zoning bylaw. They have been proposed by the applicant to be included in the zoning bylaw to cover this special type of senior village development, and I'll be describing exactly what that means in the following slides. Okay, so just a bit about the lands, the subject lands have an area of approximately 54 acres. So this is the lands that are owned by the township. It's only the residential portion, it doesn't include the northern portion, which is the industrial lands. So these lands have been approved by council to be part of the IHA land lease, just to be clear. So the lands have direct access onto County Road 43 without total frontage of approximately 135 meters. And they are within the urban settlement boundary of Alexandria with a portion of the lands containing non-evaluated wetlands. This is just a really minor area to the north of the lands, non-evaluated wetlands. So I mentioned the total frontage is 135 meters, that is because there's two portions with frontage on County Road 43. You will see there is a larger frontage here and a smaller frontage right here. And the area is adjacent to industrial areas, residential areas, and the hospital to the south. And then to the west, you have agricultural areas.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead, councillor Massey.
Just while we're on this subject here, you know that little part, Kasia, that, you know, that has the frontage on 43?
Yes.
Yeah, that one there, just for, like, we don't have to do this right now, but that basically is the entrance for Eddie Aymann, ours backyard. So I know that right away, but he doesn't know that. So could we not eliminate that, just because it goes right beside his house? To say, it's about 15, anyways, we can look at that later there, but it's just, we gotta keep that in mind too.
Okay, definitely, okay, thanks for coming. So moving forward. I described the adjacent uses, but this is just a zoning map for you. So as I mentioned, industrial uses to the north, to the east, you have institutional industrial uses. And further east, you have a lot of residential uses. To the south, you have institutional uses, you have the hospital, you have a flood plain and wetlands further. And to the west, you have agricultural lands. And that's pretty much it, and next slide. So the zoning amendment proposes a residential mixed-use village with residential uses and personal service commercial uses. That is the reason for the wording residential mixed use, and you will see a full list of the uses in the next slide. So therefore, the zoning bylaw will amend section 5 by adding these two new zones to facilitate the proposed development, which has been named Glengarry Hills by the applicants. And the RMU zone will contain the first few phases, sorry, first two phases of the development, so phase one and two. And a holding provision will be applied to the remainder of their lands for the remainder of the phases. In order to remove the holding provision, zoning bylaw amendment will be required for each stage of the development, including site plan control. And this will also confirm any sanitary servicing studies that might be required as part of the development. Okay, so this map is the subject lands again, but is divided into the two proposed zones. So you will see area A, which is phase one and phase two essentially. This is the RMU zone, residential mixed use. So the development would start right here in area A. And the remainder of the lands, area B, would be the residential mixed use holding zone that would require zoning by law amendments for lifting of the holding and site plan control, et cetera. Okay, so to dive deeper into what exactly means the residential mixed use zone that is proposed. So there's two sets of uses, residential uses and non-residential uses. So the residential uses are mostly low to medium density res uses such as accessory apartment, apartment dwelling, duplex, garden suite, group home, semi-detached dwelling, secondary dwelling unit, single-этаж dwelling, planned in the development or retirement home, rowhouse dwelling, and dwelling units located and or attached to a permitted commercial use in the same building as a commercial use. And for the non-residential uses, what is proposed is a personal commercial service type of uses, which are antique shop, bakery, bank, catering establishment, clinic, commercial club, commercial greenhouse, community center, community garage, community garden, convenience store, dry cleaning, farmers market, health service, medical office, dental office, other offices, park, public spaces, private parks, personal service establishment, shops, pet shops, places of entertainment, recreational assembly, places of worship, printing shop, rental establishment, restaurant, the bar, retail store, service outlet, and veterinary establishment. So those are the full list of uses that will be permitted within the RMU zone. And then the proponent has proposed parking provisions. Our zoning bylaw is a little outdated, so these are standards from the city of Ottawa zoning bylaw, and also the accessibility for Ontario's with disabilities act. It's just really good practices to have within our zoning bylaw. So I think it's an excellent idea that they included that, and that is just the parameters in front of you. I won't read it out, but it's pretty standard across Ottawa.
Question, please?
Yes, go ahead, deputy mayor.
It says here that the minimum number of required parking spaces shall be 0.5 spaces for each dwelling unit. So how do you have half of a car in a dwelling unit?
So the assumption behind this one is that because it is a senior's home, and it might be independent or semi-independent or non-independent persons, many of them will not drive, that's the reason for that. And the proponent's also pondering potentially vehicle sharing, so car share or electronic vehicles. So kind of going towards that sustainability angle. But I'm sure they will elaborate that in their presentation as a follow-up.
Okay, continue.
Okay, thank you. So in front of you is the full site plan. Again, this is very preliminary. So here in this area is phase one and phase two, it's mostly duplex dwellings, as you will see. And to note is the entrance that would be here from that smaller frontage. Again, we can discuss that with the comment from councillor Massey. And that is the general road network that is being proposed. Again, very preliminary, it could change as we move forward. The more important one for this part of the development and the zoning bylaw amendments, since we are discussing that phase one and phase two. This is in front of you, and this will be ready to go to a site plan control after it is approved by council in two weeks. Okay, so provincial policy statement, it has to be considered for every application. So there is a whole list of policies that apply to this development. It's within the report, and you can have a thorough read. But essentially, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the PPS. And the proposed development facilities arrange of mix of housing options and densities to meet projected needs of the current and future residents through a village concept. It provides seniors with independent living options to create a healthy and livable and safe community. The addition of various non-residential uses, service, personal, commercial types of uses provides the area with a mix of employment, institutional and broader mixed uses to meet long-term needs, as well as providing additional employment opportunities and amenities to the residents. So the fact that they are proposing commercial and personal type services, I think it's an excellent idea because it will be contained within the village again, for those people that will not be driving, it will be within walkable distance, so that's excellent. The proposed development will be connected to municipal water servicing. However, as everyone knows, the sanitary servicing situation is very tricky right now. It is over capacity in Alexandria. So right now, it's being proposed to be serviced through a private sanitary system. However, the plan is to connect it to a municipal sanitary servicing system when it does become available. And more details on servicing will be provided through the site plan approval stage. Okay, so the United Counties of Stirling, Dundas, and Glengarry official plan. So the lands are designated residential district. This designation does permit a range of low, medium, high-density housing, including specialized housing such as homes, group homes, crisis care, social assisted housing, and secondary units. And then as well, neighborhood service uses, so convenience, commercial, open space, and institutional uses. Then we have a consideration for the servicing capacity and allocation. So all proposed development within the service limits shall be connected to full or partial services where such services are available and where there's sufficient capacity to accommodate the proposed development. Where there is insufficient capacity, the local municipality shall determine whether their proposed development is premature and should be postponed until servicing capacity is increased. So as I mentioned, that will be confirmed at site plan control through sanitary servicing studies unless municipal servicing does become available sooner. And the proposed development will be connected to municipal's water services. Okay, and our township of North Glengarry zoning bylaw, the lands are currently zoned residential first density and residential fourth density in schedule C. As I mentioned, the rezoning will be to an RMU H and RMU zone to facilitate the development of Glengarry Hills and seniors' village as an outline within the WSP IHA planning rationale. And the applicants did submit a planning rationale, and there was a very thorough report with all the details. And then, as I mentioned, the proponent will be required to apply for the removal of holding for each subsequent phase of the development. Conclusion, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the development of a senior's village represents good land use planning, is appropriate for these subject lands. A zoning bylaw amendment, the zoning bylaw application is consistent with the PPS 2020, conforms to the SCG county's official plan, and complies with the intent of the township of North Glengarry zoning bylaw. It's compatible with the surrounding area and is desirable development within the urban settlement boundary of Alexandria with an appropriate range and mix of uses to meet the long-term needs in the area in terms of seniors' needs and housing. And therefore, the recommendation of the planning department is that the zoning bylaw amendment be forwarded to council for further consideration and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Kasia. Very thorough presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the committee? This is the public, go ahead, councillor Manley.
Okay, just going back to what Jacque was talking about. Kasia, do you know how wide that strip of land is that we're talking about, where the entrance would be offhand? Do you know what that is?
I believe it's about 35 meters.
35 meters wide, okay, okay.
Okay, you got, everyone okay to hold off till the regular meeting? Okay, so now we will ask the members of the public that have asked to speak this evening. I'm not sure, Kasia, who is going to speak, so if you can help me out there?
Yes, Nadia De Santi, would you like to present your presentation now? Nadia?
Hello. Hi, good evening. So we do have a presentation, but I will defer to my client Will Ball, who will present on IHA Canada and a little bit about their company and some of the proposed housing models that are contemplated for the site.
Welcome, Will.
Hey, everybody, thanks, Nadia, appreciate the tea up there. Thanks for the very thorough presentation as well, Kasia. I feel like I don't have that much left to say. But I've got a bit of a presentation here, I'm gonna try not to drag on too long. Anybody who knows me knows I struggle with that. So I'll try to be concise, but give you folks a bit of an update on where we're at. Am I able to share my screen?
Yeah, Will, you should be able to.
All right. All right, can you guys, can everybody see everything?
Yep.
Excellent, so. Here. So what I want to cover tonight is just the general overview of where we're at in the design and go over some of the I guess, design goals and vision for the project. So I'm gonna start with the current site plan and overview of the design goals. And then I'm gonna go into a little bit more detailed discussion on the preliminary designs of phase one and phase two, as Kasia teed up there. Then I'm gonna present the road cross-sections that we're proposing for the ring road access within the development that, just to be clear, is gonna remain a privately owned road, but just so everybody knows what we're looking at. And then present some of the preliminary architectural renderings prepared by Chris Simmons, architect and his team for what some of the pocket neighborhood's gonna look like. So we'll start off with the site plan. So as you, as you folks see here, we have detailed design, at least from an architectural standpoint, phase one and phase two. If you can see my cursor, it's these ones here on the right-hand side. But overall, the village is really centered around this north-south corridor that you see running right through the center of the site. We're tentatively calling it the green ribbon, and the goal of, or the idea behind this ribbon is to really create a centralized congregation area for people to be able to migrate north-south through the site, and also ultimately tie into the site on the south, South Highway 43 with the hospital. This central, this green ribbon, it acts really as a highway, so to speak, for individuals to move around, but also it's gonna serve several engineering functions. As our green location in this, in this site, we're gonna, we're gonna use it to handle some of the stormwater servicing. So the idea here is to create a series of wetlands and water features that will act as a stormwater system, but not, you know, what I'm really afraid of is to have one large ugly pond that really doesn't work well in today's developments. So the idea is to create zones within this green ribbon to provide green space, congregation space for individuals, and also act as as an engineering system as well. So directly on adjacent to the green ribbon, you see as we've tentatively drawn it as these boxes, they're higher-density buildings, two-to-three-story apartment buildings that will provide some of the higher-density space that we've we've realized we needed through our public consultations. People with higher needs, i.e. less mobility, are more connected to that central corridor and are able to move around a lot easier because they're directly adjacent. You'll see here on this ring of roads here, the idea, it's the You'll see here on this ring of roads here, the idea, it's it's the it's the means of getting around the site. And that really encompasses that middle section that's gonna be our higher density. As you see circling around the outside of the property are our housing, housing dwellings, you know, single-family semi-detached and row units. Those have been designed generally for people with less physical needs because it is further away from from the central corridor and it's more of a traditional house rather than an apartment building. We haven't shown it on this plan because we're we're just in the in the early stages of it, but in the southwest portion of the property is where we're gonna have our the the bulk of our commercial space and the rationale for that is that it's it's near highway forty-three. Not only do we attract people from the village into these commercial spaces, but also also folks from the community as well. So, you know, keep the relatively close to highway forty-three and and you encourage everybody to go shopping. We'll move on. This is a close-up of our conceptual phase one and phase two designs. Here you can see a lot more of the detail of the different types of units. You have a mixture of some row units. Single families generally fronting the ring road to allow people to have driveways without having to park in some of these parking lots. But really, the the goal of this in in the work with our architectural group was to really create those pocket communities that we've talked about right from the start of this project. The emphasis of cars fronting right in front of the house and emphasizing community space. It'll, this'll be a little more clear when I show the rendering shortly. But the idea is to really get folks out walking, be in relatively close proximity to their neighbors to really foster a sense of community. You know, amongst the larger community. So our goal, our our design goal really as as a group was to create a larger village, but within that larger village, create these smaller pocket communities where groups of ten, fifteen, twenty houses or individuals can create a smaller sense of community in a relatively close space without you know, in a different type of of setting. Okay, so these are our proposed cross-sections for the ring road as as you saw previously. If I actually, before I get into that, I'll shoot, I can't go backwards. Sorry, folks. Okay, so if you look closely, let's see if I can zoom in here. If you look closely, the ring road actually has a series of juts in and out. And really, that was to provide primarily visitor parking to support people in the community. And if you look here, you see the the parking spot source spaced all along the all along the road. So really, along the road, we're gonna have two different types of cross-sections. So this is the first one. Seven-meter-wide road, which complies, it's a meter wider than the minimum access according to the City of Ottawa guidelines. With a two-point-six-meter-wide street parking and a three-meter-wide multi-use pedestrian path and and cycling path that runs along the side. In the areas where we don't have parking, it will look like this. Same road, seven-meter-wide, three and a half in each direction, but rather than having parking, we're gonna create a green buffer that's going to primarily of trees, but also likely some some smaller shrubs and landscaping to really, really enhance the site. So that, those two road types are really gonna be our the bulk of what we're doing here and anything internal is really just gonna be access to the parking roads. Once you get into the pocket communities, then you're getting into more of, you know, a three-meter-wide path specifically designed for pedestrians. So these are some of the preliminary renderings that CSA Group has put together. I wanted to emphasize that some of the colors and some of the finishings really are really are preliminary. We wanted to put something together to really demonstrate to people what this type of layout can really look like. The specifics of siding and, you know, like I said, color, that is to be determined and we're gonna be reaching out to the community to really nail down some of those specifics. But I wanted to present these today because I think they give a good sense of what it's gonna be like to actually walk around in one of these communities. So as you can see here. This is one of the access paths here. It's actually a rendering. I won't try to flip back because I think it'll create some, but it's basically standing in one of the parking lots, looking into one of the pocket communities. So that's what you would look like. And as you can see here, these are these are actually back doors, but you know, you have a nice walkway where you can see your neighbors very, very easily and it creates a really I I think a very comforting sense of space. This is an example of somebody's front door. So we've designed a little front porch that people can hang out in in a covered space, but also be in in a great position to be able to see your neighbors walk by and really foster that strong sense of community. This is looking at one of the single-family homes, so we would basically be, from this perspective, we would be standing on the ring road looking into one of the communities. This vehicle you see here on the left is is the part, the driveway is off of that main road. So anytime, any of the dwellings that are gonna have the garages or carports are gonna be off that main street. But as you can see, it's it's relatively easy to walk into the higher-density portions in behind. So maybe I'll go back to, I think there's one thing I wanted to add to this. So, you know, to to put that into context. That last image would basically be standing right here, if you can see my cursor, looking into the development. So, you know, if you have a single-family home, you'll typically have a much more traditional type of housing unit. You know, driveway off of a main road. Anybody else is going to be much more walking-focused. The emphasis of cars and and using these these parking lots that you can see here with a with a relatively short walk-in into their their dwelling. So I'm really not gonna spend too too much time talking because again, I I think everybody has been updated on this project quite a bit, but but I would be happy to field field questions.
Thank you, Will. Are there any questions from the committee right now? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next person, Kasia.
Is there any other persons from the public who would like to comment?
Ask, we'll ask a second time.
Anyone who would like to comment?
And a third time.
Anyone who would like to comment on this application?
Okay, doesn't seem like there are any comments. Are there any further questions from members of the committee before we move on to the next zoning? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Z eleven twenty twenty, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I will share my screen again. Can everyone see the screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Z eleven twenty twenty. Okay, so the applicant for this one is Ronald Teore, it's also the owner. The location is East Boundary Road in Alexandria. The official plan designation is residential district and the zoning is residential first density with a holding provision. And these are the subject lands on East Boundary Road. It is about thirty-three-point-six acres of land on East Boundary Road in Alexandria. There is mostly woodlands, a small portion of the lot on along East Boundary Road has already been cleared for the proposed garage and dwelling. So the purpose of this application is to rezon the subject lands from residential R one H to special exception R one six to remove the holding designation and to permit the construction of an accessory garage prior to the single-этаж home. So both the uses are permitted. It's just that usually you're, you build a home before a garage, but the applicant will be building the garage before the home. So as I mentioned, the planning department has received this request to rezon the property and the single-этаж dwelling and accessory garage will be serviced by a municipal water and private sanitary system. And the lot is currently vacant with some woods and an area of thirty-three-point-six acres. Their proposed use is consistent with the PPS twenty twenty. The SDG County's official plan, the residential district designation permits a range of residential uses including low-density and accessory as is proposed in the zoning amendment. Therefore, it does conform with the SDG County's official plan. And the township of North Glengarry zoning by law, so the adjacent lands to the subject lands are zoned rural holding. Residential density to the south, residential first density and residential density, first density holding to the north and west. Therefore, the proposed zoning amendment is compatible with the adjacent and residential uses. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the planning department to approve zoning amendments at eleven twenty twenty. Thank you.
Kasia, are there any questions from members of the committee at this point?
I have a quick question. Kasia, what's the difference between we're allowing them to hook up to municipal water? But yet they have to go into private services.
They don't, they don't have a sanitary servicing at this location and given that it's on existing lot of record, it's permitted to be connected to sanitary servicing. It's not a severance and it's a infill development, so it's very low-density, just a single-этаж home. If they were proposing something more intensive, might be more complicated for sanitary servicing.
So the point is that it's an existing lot, that's that they didn't require a severance?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Um, yeah, I'm just curious. It's a large, fairly large piece of land there and he he is a developer, right? Is he not planning on doing any development in there? Is that just gonna be personal for his own personal house then?
So right now he is constrained by the sanitary servicing, the lack thereof. Once that becomes available, he could definitely sever this land or even do a plan of subdivision. So there's a lot of potential. But as it stands right now, until the sanitary sewage is upgraded, he can't do anything more, really.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions. Go ahead, councillor Mountain.
I just wanted to clarify, are we sure that we have municipal water there? I think those residences, those lots are on on private wells.
I I saw water on my mapping, but that's what I saw.
Well, if we have any further questions, we can ask them in the planning committee meeting. Zoning amendment Z twelve twenty twenty, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to my PowerPoint. So this one is an agricultural surplus lot, the severance, and they're required as a zoning amendment. So the applicant is Justin Ricard. The location is thirty-one thirty McFiro in Alexandria. The lands are zoned and designated agriculture. So this is part of consent application B forty-seven twenty. And the reason for this application is the severed law is to be rezoned from the agricultural designation to a special exception one eighty-nine to prohibit agricultural uses and the retained lot is to be rezoned from agriculture to special exception Ag one ninety to prohibit the residential development. And also acknowledge the minimum lot area deficiency on both retained and severed lands. So it is an undersized agriculture lot as it is. It is only twenty-five acres. And the applicant received conditional approval from SDG Counties on August twentieth to sever zero-point-eight acres of land deemed surplus to the needs of the farm. So there it is in front of you, the severance, the severed land and the retained lands, so zero-point-eight acres and about twenty-one acres for the retained lands. So very standard severance. So the application does comply with both the provincial policy statement two thousand fourteen and twenty twenty and the SDG County's official plan that do permit a lot of creation of agricultural lands for residents surplus dwelling. And finally, the recommendation of the planning department is to approve zoning amendments at twelve twenty twenty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, councillor Massey?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just on the, when we did the second application, I think you did, nobody asked if there was any comment from the public?
I I believe that, I don't believe that anyone else is on the call at this point. Well, we can't ask when there's nobody on the call because there's no way for anybody to
That's okay.
They would have to contact us in advance. Kasia, why, just so we know for certain, there was nobody on Z eleven twenty twenty?
There was nobody on the call. I did receive some questions and I answered them at the office.
Okay. And are there any, is there anyone for Z twelve twenty twenty?
I don't think so, no. I haven't received any requests for the meeting.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, we will, I have a motion moved by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Manley. There being no further business discussed, the public meeting was adjourned at six forty-six PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to the planning committee meeting. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, except the agenda of a motion moved by councillor Wentzink, seconded by councillor Manley. That the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the planning committee meeting agenda of Monday, November ninth, twenty twenty. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. I ratified the minutes. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink. That the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the planning committee meeting of Monday, October twenty-six, twenty twenty. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to zoning amendment said ten twenty twenty, I have a motion moved by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Manley. It is the recommendation of the planning department that Z ten twenty twenty be forwarded to the council of the township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, before Kasia starts. Because there are some individuals from the public on here. I I just wanted to make sure they understand that they had their opportunity.
They were all on there for the first, for the first item on the agenda. And we asked a good time. That's why we knew who who has been, who's on the agenda, who's on here this evening.
So they know that they no longer haven't, they've lost that opportunity to speak, then I take that.
Okay, we've asked. Thank you. Go ahead, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I presented during the public meeting. Is there any questions from the planning committee?
Are there any questions from the members of the committee on Z ten twenty twenty? Seeing none.
Rather than the number, please.
I've already read the motion. It is the first one that we did this evening, which was the hospital. The IHA.
Yeah, I I appreciate the detail of the you know, both presentations. And obviously, you know, in order for IHA to move forward, well, in my mind anyway, we need to approve that. I I just wanted to say that I I'm I'm pleased to see in there that there is a the the private servicing is addressed in terms of the the fact that when municipal sanitary becomes available that there will be, they'll be connecting. So I I was just, I was happy to see that as part of the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to Z eleven twenty twenty, I have a motion moved by councillor Mountain, seconded by councillor Noble. It is the recommendation of the planning department that Z eleven twenty twenty be forwarded to the council of the township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. This is the Ron Thiora zoning. Go ahead, Kasia.
Any questions, planning committee?
Are there any questions on this zoning amendment from the planning committee? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to Z twelve twenty twenty, I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Mountain. It is the recommendation of the planning department that Z twelve twenty twenty be forwarded to the council of the township of North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. This is the last one. This is the last one that we looked at in the public meeting. Are there any questions on this? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Madden, that there be no further business discussed. Planning committee meeting was adjourned at 6:52 PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Through those three meetings, we will, we have next our council meeting and we will take a six-minute break. And see you back here in six minutes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of council for Monday, November 9th. I'd like to welcome all members of council staff and anyone that is watching on Facebook Live. Welcome. Like to call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, November 9th, 2020. Are there any questions on the agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Adoption of the previous minutes. I have a motion moved by Councilor Massey, seconded by Councilor Noble, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated regular meeting of council, October 26th, 2020, special meeting of council, November 4th, 2020. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We have no delegations. Staff reports, community services department, I have a motion moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Councilor Manley, that council receives staff report CS 2020 dash 25 and that bylaw number 43 dash 2020 being a bylaw to amend the fees and charges by law 25 dash 2020. And at the bylaw 43 2020, be read a first, second, and then third time and enacted in open council this ninth day of November, 2020. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this report was brought to the committee as a whole with a special temporary COVID-19 rate for the unreserved hours for both the turf and the multi-sport surface. The special rate would be $5 per individual for a maximum of $40 for the rental. And again, this applies to unreserved open hours. And to note that the maximum rates would only be in effect in the new year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. CIP application for 36 MacDougal Avenue, Alexandria, the Atlantic Pub and Eatery. I have a motion moved by Councilor Manley, seconded by Councilor Madden. The council receives the staff report number CS 2020 dash 26 and that council approves the recommendation from the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee for the Community Improvement Plan project at 36 MacDougal Avenue, Alexandria, as submitted by Ron Edwards, signing authority for 277 6808 Ontario Inc. Program C Civic Address Grant, representing one civic sign provided by the municipality as part of its civic sign program. Program C Commercial Signage Grant, representing a matching grant of 50% up to a maximum of $1,927.50. And Program E Building Permit Fee Grant, representing a matching grant of 100% up to a maximum of $90. Total grants, $2,017.50. Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the new owners have applied to the Community Improvement Plan for commercial signage and building permit fee grants. As you can see, the new sign would be installed on the front of the building. Staff would also like to highlight that this building is undergoing extensive renovations as we speak. The following page of your report shows a diagram of the front of the facade work that started today and which is in part subsidized through the county's regional incentive program. So we would greatly appreciate a council's support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Planning, Building and Bylaw Enforcement Department, zoning amendment Z 09 2020. I have a motion moved by Councilor Madden, seconded by Councilor Wincing, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopt zoning bylaw Z 09 2020 and that bylaw Z 09 2020 be read a first, second, third time and enacted in open council this ninth day of November, 2020. Kesha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this zoning amendment Z 09 2020 was approved by the planning committee on October 26th and there was no further comments or questions from the public.
Okay. Any questions from the members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Sidewalk cleaner replacement. Public Works Department, I have a motion moved by Councilor Wincing, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that council receives report PW 2020 dash 27, sidewalk cleaner replacement and that council reapproves the purchase of a sidewalk cleaner in the amount of $216,000 for the 2021 budget. And welcome, Dean. You're muted, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of our 2021 capital, we're going to be requesting to replace our sidewalk cleaner. So we're asking council if we can get preapproval on this item, so we can begin the tendering process now and have this unit in our fleet for the, this winter snow season. Thank you.
Just a question from, just where would they have this, was this on any, like a replacement plan or?
Yes.
This, this is one that was, it was due?
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes, it's part of our fleet plan that this was coming up for replacement.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Massey?
Yes, Dean, maybe, is, will this sidewalk cleaner unit, will it have the ice, the, you know, the, the module on it to break the ice or shave the ice at the back of it like we saw at the groves there in the, in the winter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, not this unit. I don't believe we're, have had great success with this units in Ottawa. So we didn't request this, so we're not going to be pressing this on our units.
Okay. Okay, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thanks. Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just, it's a, it's a big dollar item. This, the sidewalk, I, I know that, you know, there needs to be a replacement there, but I, I'm just concerned about preapproving such a large capital item without the benefit of seeing what the other capital item requests are going to be so that we can put the request in, in perspective. I know we want to keep our, our taxes down this year and I just, I'm just concerned about preapproving something when we don't have all of the information in front of us.
Dean, you're going to take that question or are you frozen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, through Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have another dump truck that we're going to be having in our 21, 2021 capital also this year. Snowplows unit.
What was our, you know, if I can ask the treasurer maybe to jump in here. I'm just wondering what, what was our ask last year and what, what is the ask this year? Kim?
Hi, I'm looking at the capital budget and the capital budget for fleet next year. There is room for this unit, no problem, and it's been part of the 10-year capital plan. I do not have a concern with this unit at all. It's going to be tax-based, but part of the whole fleet that's coming forward to council with the budget, it, it's well in line.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Manley?
No, that's, that's fine. I'm good. Thank you.
Councilor Massey?
Yeah, the, through, through you, Kim, through Mayor. I think our mayor asked, what was the capital ask last year and compared to this year? Like the, this, next year, just, just give us an idea of what, how much money we're at stake here.
Are you talking total capital ask or just fleet?
Fleet last year, listen to, in.
Fleet was over a million dollars last year and I think this year it's about 650, but I, I don't have the figures in front of me. But like I said, it's in line and preliminary budget figures are coming in very close to last year's. So I'm really not concerned with this. It's just probably better to tender it early so that the equipment's here in the early spring for them to use it.
Another question.
Yes, go ahead.
Councilor Massey. Dean, what's the life, lifespan of a, a unit like this? Like what's the, how many years will, will we have it?
Well, the one that we have in Alexandria now is 10 years old and it's been troublesome. Every year it seems they have to send it back into Montreal to get some major work done on it.
So, so sorry, but the one we're replacing, which one is it?
The one in Alexandria, the Camellia.
Okay, so the 10-year-old one?
Yes.
So does it need replacing or we're just replacing?
It's, we've been putting a lot of money into it over the last few years.
Okay. Kim, you had something you wanted to add to that?
In all fairness, it depends on the asset and the, the amount of use it has. Our assets, like we have some pickup trucks that are 12 years, we have some pickup trucks that are eight years that are needing replacement. Totally depends on the usage, but we're averaging between eight and 10 years for life cycle.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams, did you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. This is, is the, and don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it doesn't need to, to be replaced. I'm just, it's, it's about timing for me and, and handling this preferably at budget time. Is the, is the current unit still functioning?
Through, yes, it is. We've done quite a bit of work over the summer on it. We're putting tracks on it just recently also.
Hey, thank you.
For the question, Counselor Madden, then Counselor Noble?
Just a, excuse me, quick question, more curiosity, I think, what kind of residual value have we got on the one that's being replaced? Are we expecting anything as far as a resale value?
Through, Mr. Mayor, we were hoping to maybe keep this one as a standby if we ever had a problem with one of them. Plus, if we do have a big ice storm, we could use it to, the two sidewalk cleaners in town. Because when we're, when we have a lot of ice, the one loader is not being used. And we have the one dump truck, so one person can go on the extra sidewalk cleaner, clean up faster.
Okay, thank you.
Our plan.
Okay, Counselor Noble?
Yeah, Dean, you were just talking about also a truck that was coming up. So, Kim, do we have room for that as well? I know we don't have to decide that now, but just.
Sorry, what was that?
Dean mentioned that there was another truck that was going to be coming up in the fleet plan.
We still have room. There's several items that council has to look at, but there's still room for it.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? There is one opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, thank you, Dean. Going on to the consent agenda that the council of the township of North, sorry, moved by Counselor Massey, seconded by Counselor Noble, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives items from the consent agenda for information purposes only. Is there any discussion on the items of the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. New business. Letter from South Nation Conservation. Is that something we're discussing tonight, Madam CEO?
Yes, I believe Counselor Williams wanted to speak to this.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yes, it's, it's actually, the, the letter came from the township of South Dundas, actually. And, and their letter came to us and then there was subsequently a response from the Chair of the South Nation Conservation Board, if you read them both. So the South Dundas letter came first and then the reply afterwards. I, I think South Dundas's concern has merit. It's a, you know, and, and the, I believe it's an increase where they already have a significant surplus projected for 2020, $250,000. And yet, there is, there's going to be a sort of an increase in the levy, I think, by 2%. And I just think that, you know, we're living in a time where with COVID, everyone needs to be tightening their belts and just an automatic increase and not sort of, and banking the surplus to me is, it is, it's not, it doesn't demonstrate, you know, sort of fiscal carefulness, I guess.
Okay.
So I would just like, I would just like to us to support South Dundas's letter. That's all. I don't know what rest of council thinks. That's just my thought.
Any questions from the rest of the members of council? So Madam CEO, how do we go about doing just that? I mean, just, I'm not sure if every member of council has read those letters. Just asking for everyone to nod their heads if they have. Okay, and is everyone in support of, of doing so? Yep, yep. Okay, so can we go ahead, Counselor Manley?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment. Do we know, I mean, South Nation is obviously a very small part of our, of our jurisdiction or whatever. But wondering, do we have any idea where, where Raisin Region is going with this? Have we heard anything about that?
Counselor Massey? A question asked, do you know what the budget is going to come in for at the Raisin Region as far as the percentage?
That's the reason, we're having our next meeting for budget this week or the week after, I believe.
Okay.
At the Raisin River, but this is South Nation.
Yeah, no, I realize that. I was just curious.
I'm just curious.
Okay, yeah, okay, no, I'll, I'll let council know as soon as we, we do have a, a number for you guys. But I believe it's this Wednesday or the next, we're meeting, but I'll report on it.
Maybe, maybe Counselor Massey, if you could just sort of let them know that we're, we're going to support, you know, the resolution, the resolution that we had sent from, from.
Okay, and I do just for information, I believe the Chair of the Raisin River is the mayor from South Dundas. Mr. McGillis?
No, that's a mayor of South Stormont. Anyways, okay, so.
So what we'll do is, when we come out of camera, we'll, the CEO will prepare a resolution that we can pass once we come back to regular meeting. Everyone's okay with that and just for the, for the public's sake, that is something that we will be endorsing. So okay, notice of motion, next regular public meeting of council is Monday, November 23rd at 7:00 PM via Zoom. At this point, we're still going to be going with Zoom and we have closed session business. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Counselor Massey, that we proceed in closed session, legal as this matter deals with the advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. They may be discussed in closed session under sections 239, 2F of the Ontario Municipal Act. Auditors report as this matter deals with information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province or territory, or a crown agency of any of them. They may be discussed in closed session under section 239, 2H of the Ontario Municipal Act and adopt the minutes of the municipal council closed session meeting of October 26, 2020. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, so we'll be moving in camera. I'd like to thank all members of the public watching tonight for joining us and thank all of staff that were here this evening. Counselor Manley, did you have something you wanted to say? Oh, I thought you had your hand up. Okay.
Yeah, I was pre-voting.
Pre-voting? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
Too close to call.